Morning in Zoom. All right. Good morning, everybody. I would like to thank you all for being here. This Greenwich Hospital, the applicants in this matter seek a certificate of need for the termination of inpatient or outpatient services offered by a hospital pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section nineteen A dash six thirty-eight paren small A paren five. Specifically, the applicant seeks to propose to transfer its adult and pediatric outpatient clinics to be operated by the Family Centers, Inc., a federally qualified health center. Today is March is March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and my name is Alicia Novy. Dr. Deidre S. Gifford, the executive director of the Office of Health Strategy, designated me to serve as hearing officer for this matter to rule on all motions and recommend findings of fact, conclusions of law based upon completion of the hearing. Public Act twenty-one dash two, as amended by Public Act twenty-two dash three, authorizes the agency to hold a hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his, her, or their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We will ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine paren or sorry, six thirty-nine A paren small F paren two, which provides that HSP may hold a hearing with respect to any certificate of need application submitted under chapter three sixty-eight Z. Although this is, uh, this will be a discretionary hearing, the manner in which OHS conducts these proceedings will be guided by chapter fifty-four of the Uniform Administrators Procedures Act and the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies, sections nineteen A dash nine dash twenty-four. The Office of Health Strategy staff is here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application, and I'll be asking the applicant witnesses questions. At this time, I'm going to ask each staff person assisting with questions today to identify themselves with their name and the spelling of their last name and OHS title.
Good morning. Stephen Lazarus. Last name is spelled L A Z A R U S. I'm the Certificate of Need Program Supervisor.
Hello, I'm Jessica Rival. I am an analyst assigned to this application for the Office of Health Strategy.
Good morning. My name is Yadera McGlaughlin, M C capital L A U G H L I N, and I'm a planning analyst also assigned to this application.
Thank you. Also present is Fay Fentes, who is assisting with hearing logistics, gathering names for public comment, and providing miscellaneous support. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process, and on such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicants, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these hearings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to OHS are available for review through our Certificate of Need CON portal, which is accessible on the OHS CON webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine of the Connecticut general statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you in the course of either entering this hearing or right before I started speaking, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the Zoom meeting or leave, um, by exiting the Zoom meeting. I'm going to start by going over the exhibits and items of which I am taking administrative notice, and then I will ask if there are any objections. Uh, the CON portal contains the pre-hearing table of record in this case, and exhibits were identified in a table from A to Q. Mr. Lazarus, Ms. McGlaughlin, and Ms. Rival, do we have any additional exhibits to enter into the record at this time?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the applicant is hereby noticed that I'm also taking administrative notice of the following documents: the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan and its supplements, the facilities and services inventory, the OHS acute care hospital discharge data, the all payer claims database data, and the hospital reporting systems HRS financial and utilization data. I may also take administrative notice of other prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant in this matter, but which not have, but which have not yet been identified. Counsel for Greenwich Hospital, can you please identify yourself on the record at this time?
Good morning. My name is Joan Fulkman with Shipman and Goodwin, and I am outside counsel for Greenwich Hospital.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, and all right. Uh, are there any objections to the exhibits in the table of record or the administratively noticed documents or and dockets?
We have no objection.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I will, um, all identified and marked exhibits are entered as full exhibits. Do you have any additional exhibits you wish to enter at this time?
No, we do not.
Much. All right. We will proceed in the order established on in the agenda for today's hearing. I would like to advise the applicant that we may ask questions. Uh, sorry, I just want to make, I read off paper, and I just wanted to make sure I was in the right spot. Uh, I would like to advise the applicant that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will be doing this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of your proposal and the purpose of, uh, and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, your completeness responses, and pre-file testimony, and I will do so many times before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. All participants and the public shall mute their devices and should disable the cameras when they are go, uh, when we go off the record or take a break. Please be advised that although we do try and shut off the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video that has been not been disabled will be accessible to all participants. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual by name when it is their turn to speak. Registration for public comment can be done using Zoom, using the Zoom chat function. Please list your name and that you would like to make a public comment in the message. The public comment is scheduled to start at twelve P M. If the technical portion of this hearing has not been completed by twelve P M, public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment, and so OHS may have follow-up questions based on the public comment. If anyone listening to this hearing would like to submit written comments in lieu of speaking today, you may do so by emailing your comments to concomment@ct.gov. Again, that is C O N, C O M as in Mary, M as in Mary, E N as in Nancy, T at ct.gov. Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues we need to address before we start?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Is there an opening statement from the applicant?
Yes, there is.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Hearing Officer Novy, for this opportunity today to present my opening remarks to you. The decision by Greenwich Hospital to trans transition its outpatient adult and pediatric clinics to family centers was a deliberate and careful decision made over a period of several years with significant collaboration and planning with community stakeholders. As you know, hospitals must regularly recalibrate to do what is in the best interest of their patients and the community, and often reallocate limited resources in different directions. In the instant case, this is exactly what Greenwich Hospital is proposing by collaborating with family centers and finding a new pathway that would offer its patients more holistic services that meet the needs of this population. The prop- the proposal before you is not a novel proposal. Hospitals all over the country collaborate with federally qualified health centers to create models of care that fully address the social determinants of health of this vulnerable population. Through our testimony today, we hope to demonstrate that the services offered by family centers are different and more fulsome primary care services than that which Greenwich Hospital currently provides, that it will not cost more for either our patients or payers simply because the services provided by family centers are reimbursed with an all-inclusive form of reimbursement. The proposed model has demonstrated to result in a significant and positive impact with respect to reducing avoidable emergency department admissions and inpatient stays. Greenwich Hospital continues to be committed to reducing healthcare disparities for patients so they attain the highest level of health and a fair and just opportunity to obtain their optimal health regardless of their race, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, preferred language, or other factors that affect access to care and health outcomes. Through this very collaboration, Greenwich Hospital will partner with an organization that has excellent quality care and has the expertise to work with Greenwich Hospital in caring for joint patients. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Attorney Feldman, um, would you please identify all individuals by name and title who are planning to provide opening, um, uh, remarks on your application so I can swear them in?
Yes, um, Diane Kelly of Greenwich Hospital, the president of Greenwich Hospital.
And since it's a large room, if I could ask the person who's being identified, just raise their hand so I can see, okay, which one you are. Thank you.
And Bob Arnold, the CEO of Family Centers.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I'm going to ask you both to please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your pre-file testimony and the evidence that you will give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury? Ms. Kelly?
I do.
Mr. Arnold?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and put your hands down now. All right. Uh, I just want to remind you, um, when giving your testimony, please make sure to state your full name and spelling of either your last or your first or your last name, if they're difficult, um, for the, uh, court recorder. And, um, after that, then, uh, state whether you would like to adopt your written testimony that you submitted on the record prior to your statement or prior to testimony. Okay? The applicants may now proceed with their testimony, and I shall ask all witnesses to define any acronyms you use for the benefit of the public and the clarity of the record.
Okay, I'm happy to do that because acronyms drive me crazy after being in healthcare for forty years. We keep resurfacing them. Um, so, good morning, um, Attorney Novy, the Dr. Gifford, and the entire staff of OHS. I'm pleased to be here with you today, um, to provide my testimony. Before I start to do that, I would love you to adopt my pre-filled testimony as my own. My name is Diane. I go with a middle initial P. The last name is Kelly, K E L L Y. And I will begin those. So my testimony today will focus on how the proposal before you is in the best interest of the Greenwich Hospital patients and for those in the community of which we serve and depend on us. Most specifically, the proposal before you seeks approval for Greenwich Hospital to transition its outpatient clinic services to a Greenwich-based federally qualified health center known as Family Centers, Inc. I must start my testimony by stating that the Greenwich Hospital dedicated clinic clinicians and staff who serve Greenwich House, how Greenwich Hospital outpatient clinic patients are exceptional, and they provide care to this population with enormous grace, compassion, and devotion. And this I am very proud of. Therefore, we are not here today before you seeking to transition our patients' care because they will receive a much better medical care at family centers or elsewhere, but because we believe that they will receive a different and more holistic wraparound model of services offered by the family centers, the things around the primary care. In fact, the family centers operates as a patient-centered medical home, and we know that there is evidence that that truly is a state of art, especially in populations where there can be some disparities, um, on access to care. Most of our outpatient clinic patients are living with many social determinants of health, and they would benefit from the family centers, again, wraparound services. Greenwich Hospital wants to see that the patients receive the type of care they need and that is already available to them in the community. Accordingly, Greenwich Hospital decided that providing something less than what the family center provides is not risk the responsible pathway, nor is it to our patients' best interest. And Greenwich Hospital does not believe that it makes sense to try to duplicate services that are already available in the community, especially when resources are so limited to what we have in all of our communities throughout the country. As a former practicing mental health clinician, I'm a registered nurse by background of forty years. Much of my clinical experience was in the behavioral health psychiatric services. I would like to give you an example of one benefit of proposal, and admittedly, this is near and dear to my professional heart. We are all undoubtedly aware of the mental health crisis we are experiencing in this country. On a local level, we also know that a substantial portion of our pediatric and adult patients would benefit from having timely access to behavioral healthcare services. Currently, when our Greenwich Hospital clinical patients are referred to behavioral health services, there is much delay and care can become fragmented. And we know that is actually an access of having, um, providers available to all of us in the country. It's a national crisis, the amount of psychiatric services that we all have access to. This is not something that Fairfield County or State of Connecticut is struggling with alone. This is a national, um, really a national issue that we're all trying to solve for. Whereas the family centers model actually has gone above and beyond and has behavioral health services embedded in their primary care. Again, we know that that is best practice. You may ask why the Greenwich Hospital cannot provide these same services which are provided by the family center? The answer is that we are an acute care hospital. We specialize in acute care services and not the provision of the wraparound services which is already being provided by the family center. So when we're able to recruit and attract psychiatrists and mental health care clinicians, we have them embedded in our emergency room. I'm, we are opening up a, um, intensive outpatient program for people in crisis and a, um, interventional psychiatric services. So yes, we want to put it in our community practices, but it's, we have to go with the acute phase first, which I wish I wasn't having that conversation, but that is, that's the reality of what we're all struggling with. And again, if we have the ability to provide this without duplicating it, it's the right thing to do. I must also tell you that based on, um, the Yale, all right, I'm not going to use an acronym, so, um, Yale New Haven Hospitals, um, clinics experience with the transition coming from Yale New Haven Hospital to a federally qualified health center. Patients who have moved their care to health centers receive a, a host of new services previously unavailable to make to them, and now they have fewer visits to the emergency room. So sometimes things upfront will give you savings down the road, as, as I know you know that. So I, I do, um, apologize for that, but I can get very passionate about this. I mean, we actually have the data that supports the national data that in New Haven, there was a thirty-three percent reduction in avoidable ED visits and a sixteen percent reduction in inpatient admissions among those patients who actually transferred from the old, the, I don't, oh, from the previous primary care clinics to the FQHC clinic. That is, um, that is remarkable, and yes, I love the data, but every single data point is a patient who actually avoided an ED and avoided an inpatient experience that is both obviously costs where, where we want to go with, we all believe preventative care is far more, um, you know, affordable, but made to show that it can really change someone's life. Moreover, the proposal will not negatively impact the patient from a cost perspective or from any other pers- perspective from that matter. I will tell you, I want to say this very clearly. This initial conversation with Mr. Arnold, my colleague, that you are going to hear from came from the place of wanting to do better for this population. It did not come from a cost perspective. The family centers have a very generous financial assistance policy and is dedicated to serving the uninsured and underinsured, which I think is such a big part of our population. In addition to patients who transition to family centers will benefit from having access to three forty B pricing for their pharmaceutical needs. They do not have that today in our clinic. Our cost of pharmaceuticals in this country are making it cost prohibitive for people. In response to OHS query, Office of Health Services query about the effect that the proposal will have on the diversity of providers and patient choice, patients will be given the choice of transitioning their care to the family centers or another FQHC, if that is their choice. There are some, um, in, in, in Stanford, I know there's one over in New York, um, I have to tell you, I don't know all of them. Providers along with their primary care providers, if they choose not to go to an FQHC. If we have patients in our clinic with all patients and they decide this is not their path, we will help them find another primary camp. And, and if that's the case, if this proposal is approved, Greenwich will pivot and devote resources to make acute care services that are needed by the community we serve. They won't be the wraparound services, so with a full menu of options will obviously be part of the patient's choice. But with everything we do, patient choice is at the center. Because if it's not their choice, then they're not going to access it in a way that it can be best helpful. Also, I want to be very clear, the Greenwich Hospital is not by any means abandoning this patient population. It currently serves. We feel very strongly that our, as a community hospital, yes, we're fortunate to be part of Yale New Haven Health System, but our mission is to serve the community of which we serve. Greenwich Hospital will continue to offer the same patient population the acute care services it always has, including the access to specialty care that it needs, which underinsured and uninsured patients typically have difficulty access. In addition, Greenwich Hospital will provide family centers with a community benefit grant, which will include the donation of the medical equipment, the furnishings currently at the Holly Hill Lane location. So it has a turnkey operation. In addition, there will be some funding for family centers' operational losses at the Holly Hill Lane location. We absolutely know that we, we are committed to making sure that the environment of which our patients feel that this is a true wraparound primary care services, and we share that goal with the family centers. I hope my testimony has been informative and responsive, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. I appreciate your testimony. Um, Attorney Feldman?
Um, Mr. Arnold would like to provide some testimony. Thank you.
Right.
Good morning, Attorney Novy. Uh, Dr. Gifford and OHS staff, my name is Bob Arnold, um, CEO of Family Centers, and I would like to adopt my pre-file testimony as my own. Um, my testimony this morning will focus on the reasons why Family Centers supports the proposal of transition of Greenwich outpatient clinic patients to family centers. Um, at Family Centers, we believe that a healthy community is one that thrives, and our extensive network of primary health, dental, mental health services, behavioral health, educational resources, and support services breaks down barriers associated with accessing quality healthcare and builds stronger communities. Currently, um, our services are offered at one eleven Wilbur Prep Court, which is located within Greenwich Public Housing. At twenty Bridge Street, um, Greenwich High School, sixty Palmer's Hill Road in Stamford, and eight school-based health clinics um, based in Stamford Public Schools. And which is, by the way, a, a wonderful way to be uh, extending access to young people in middle and high school who are first taking control of their own healthcare and their own bodies, and it makes it very easy for them to access, um, the healthcare that they need. Uh, Family Centers serves more than twenty-four thousand Fairfield County residents each year through our primary medical and dental, uh, services, mental health, but also through preschools and early education programs for young children, um, bereavement and family counseling services, and vocational self-sufficiency supports, English language and basic literary literacy assistance and education and parenting supports. And Family Centers, as does Greenwich Hospital, has numerous collaborations and partnerships with many community service organizations for the sole purpose of providing comprehensive and coordinated health and support services, um, often referred to as wraparound services. If the application is approved, Family Centers will establish a new FQHC site at seventy-five Holly Hill Lane in Greenwich, the very same location at which Greenwich Hospital clinics currently operate, but will expand the service hours. Um, so that the, um, basic hours now are, um, nine to five-ish, four, eight to four, something like that. Um, we will have a few days where the services are open until nine and potentially some weekend services recognizing, um, that people work and in order to have access. And we do have a population, um, many of whom work at jobs where if they take time off, they're not paid for their time off. So there are a lot of hourly workers, so that's an important element, um, for them. Family Centers' primary care providers are in the best position to conduct preventative screenings and identify the healthcare needs of the patient because we are able to address the social determinants of health such as the language-related barriers, food insecurity, housing issues, unemployment, or other potential barriers to the patient achieving good health outcomes. Um, integrated support services are necessary to enhance the overall patient experience and improve long-term health outcomes. For example, I'm a primary care physician caring, caring for a newly diagnosed diabetic Spanish-speaking patient who lives at or below the poverty limits. We know for that patient to successfully manage their diabetes, they will need nutritional counseling, care coordination, and social services to assist them perhaps in purchasing healthy foods, and address any language-related barriers to obtaining other needed, um, specialty or support services. If I'm a pediatrician and caring for a child who has been recently diagnosed with developmental and educational challenges, I will need a support team to arrange the needed services to address the patient's educational and developmental needs so the child can achieve a strong educational foundation and maximize their potential. This is exactly what Family Centers does and can do for the patients who are transferred from the Greenwich Hospital clinics. As with respect to our clinicians, all are trauma-informed and capable of- all are trauma-informed and capable of identifying individual experiences, unresolved trauma, so that they can receive services from our embedded trauma and bereavement program and experts. And with respect to our patients who are children, we have a team of behavioral health clinicians who specialize in developmental issues, including diagnosis, interventions and referrals to our collective community providers so that these issues get addressed in a timely fashion and aren't left to fester. I'm excited to tell you that in February, Family Centers implemented Epic to enhance patient communications and coordination of patient care to manage care transitions and to prevent duplication of services. In addition, once the Holly Hill site, once we're located at Holly Hill Site, Family Centers will have the capacity to offer services to at least nine hundred more new patients. And as Family Centers hope that with this additional volume, Family Centers will be eligible to participate in PCMH Plus. Moreover, if the application is approved, it will allow.
Doctor Arnold, can you, can you, um, define PCMH Plus? It's an acronym for the record.
Sure, you know, I think that I'm going to ask our chief health officer, who we could swear in to, um, talk a little bit about PCMH Health.
Just one clarifying point, uh, Mr. Arnold is not a physician.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was giving an example of a physician. I, I, myself, I'm an LCSW.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Dennis Torres is our chief health officer, maybe we could swear him in just to give you.
Sure, Mr. Torres, if you could, um, just state your name for the record, please.
Sure, Dennis Torres, T O R R E S.
Sorry, all right, you could please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear solemnly and sincerely affirm that the testimony you are about to provide shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes.
All right, thank you, go ahead and put your hand down. Okay, uh, go ahead, um, what is PCMH Plus?
PCMH Plus is a program through Department of Social Services that, um, is that awards outcomes related to patient-centered medical home goals. So they look at hospital admissions or readmissions, ED usage, and there's a group in the state currently of FQHCs that receive PCMH Plus recognition. I'm, um, I think it's great that we will probably qualify for this. I'm not so sure, having attended many meetings with OHS, that this program is, is, is going to be around for very long. I hope it is, I think it's a great program, and I think it rewards, um, what we all want to see, which is the value-based outcomes. Um, and this is in fact focused on, um, value-based and alternative payment models, so um, that's what we are, uh, talking about. We did not before looking at this, um, coordination of care, qualify because of the number of patients required, you have to have at least two thousand, and we do not currently.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torres. All right, Mr. Arnold, if you'd like to go on with your test, your continued testimony?
Yeah, so I, I, I'd like to say that if the application is approved, it will, it will, um, allow Family Centers, uh, for the first time, to have a medical residency program integrated into its care delivery model. It's our hope that the medical residency program will serve as a cost-effective physician recruitment opportunity for physicians committed to Family Centers' mission. Most importantly, I want to emphasize that by addressing the social determinants of health, Family Centers will not only be positioned to improve healthcare outcomes, but it will also foster a community that is more just and inclusive. In summary, Family Centers is in full support of this application because a holistic approach to offer in healthcare services will improve the lives of all of our patients. Um, thank you for hearing my testimony, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Attorney Feldman, do you have any questions for either, or actually all three of your witnesses, before we turn to OHS?
I do not.
Okay, so at this point, um, we're going to go ahead and turn to the OHS staff um, and their questions. We will start with, uh, Ms. Rival.
Again, good morning. Um, I have a few questions, um, please feel free to have the person who is most capable of answering the question speak. Um, the first question is, explain in detail the public need for the proposed termination of outpatient services.
Hi, this is Diane Kelly, I can start with that.
Great.
Um, so say the last part of your question, just because I want to make sure I'm answering it succinctly.
Sure, just to explain in detail the public need for the proposed termination of outpatient services. The services that Greenwich Hospital is terminating.
Yeah, okay, so you know, when you say public need to close, I don't look at this as closing as much as I look at this as, as creating a new relationship with the family centers. Because my goal here, and I speak on behalf of Greenwich Hospital, is to ensure the care of our patients is continued to enhance. So yes, the technical word is close because we will, we will be then transferring that care, but not abandoning that care. I think that's where I got a little tripped up on that word. Um, our medical residents, our physicians that supervise those medical residents will be part of the everyday fabric and the, and the foundation of that care. So we stay very connected to that care. The closure to me is more of a, um, administrative process, if you will, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but I'm coming from organizing care from the patient perspective, so it would be a transferring and opening a new relationship um, and expanding what we can do based on that new collaboration. I, I think that you'll see in healthcare that we all have an obligation to collaborate with our partners so we can offer more to our communities without having overburdening of duplication of resources. So I just got a little bit like, uh, when you say close, because my heart is like, oh, I'm, I'm not walking away from this. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. On page five of the CON application, it states, "The proposed transition of the outpatient clinics from Greenwich Hospital to Family Centers is a key strategy to extend Greenwich Hospital's ability to continue caring for the medically underserved in the local community." Please explain how termination of outpatient services by Greenwich Hospital will extend its ability to continue caring for the medically underserved.
This, this is Diane, and I, well, I shouldn't just jump in, right?
Yes.
Okay. I want to follow the rules here, which is always mine. Um, so it's absolutely true that, um, we feel limited on the resources that we can provide to our community because we don't have access to some of the things that, um, the family centers would allow us to have it. So we actually feel that there are many more people that would be accessing this kind of care if they, if they, if we could offer more. Um, we are not offering behavioral health embedded in primary care. Um, we are, we don't have the dental service part of our program. We don't, we don't, we aren't reaching out to the schools. I have a, um, I should have the data on this, and I'm going to apologize that I don't. But proportionately, we know we're not reaching the number of people we should be reaching based on the community, um, health needs assessment that we partner with, um, with family centers, we, we actually do a community health needs assessment, and we have a community advisory committee with all of our nonprofits coming in together and saying, are we meeting the needs of the community? Um, we just think there's more people that need care, um, and if we had more services and we had more ability to expand that, we could do that. And this is two people come, two organizations coming together to join in and expand that access.
Okay, before, um, Ms. Rival, before you ask your next question, um, Ms. Kelly, you are moving out of the frame at times, and sometimes only half of your face.
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry.
You can come in just a little bit.
Yes, I did have to not block my colleague, yes.
Thank you, it's okay, we just wanted you to move in a little bit more, so sometimes when you move, half your face would leave this, the.
Yeah, no, I just pushed in, thank you for that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my next question are, what are the benefits and risks of the proposal to both the applicant and Family Centers Inc.?
So the benefits, I think we, I, I'm going to let, um, Mr. Arnold, but I'll just say benefits for Greenwich Hospital is that we will expand what we're capable of doing from a patient perspective. I will also tell you that we are committed to the future positions that our nation so dearly needs. This program will expand the amount of patients that our medical residents see. It is a key component of our commitment to education by having more patients and having expanded services and being in a patient-centered medical home, um, can, um, environment. We feel will enhance the experience for the medical residents. Um, and again, obviously, the expansion, the, the benefits are for our patients. The risk, I honestly will keep thinking about it, I'll turn it over to Mr. Arnold because I can't really think about what the risk would be.
So, um, I, I must say that off the top of my head, I don't really envision any risks. I see this, um, collaboration partnership as, um, full of advantages. Um, we, we already are benefiting from specialty care for our current clinic patients um, at Family Centers that will, um, extend and continue with all of, uh, with all of the additional patients at the um, Greenwich Hospital clinics. And, um, for us, it's a big plus to be working with, uh, the residency program. Um, we're excited about that, that will bring, um, many new benefits to, uh, the total population. And, um, I, I also think that when Diane says that it will, um, perhaps open up the, um, opportunity for other patients who are not currently utilizing the clinics, I would point out that, um, all of our outreach programs, some of which extend to, um, mothers giving birth for the first time, being assessed, um, up for risk factors there, and, um, having services, um, through the, our OEC PAT program. Um, that kind of program, along with a lot of our early education and two-generational programs and, um, programs where we work with, um, victims of crime, of many of whom are women, all of, all of those programs, um, open up the opportunity for, uh, referral into this bigger network of services because I think really we'll have access to all of the services that Greenwich Hospital provides, and there are all of the outreach services and wraparound services that we provide. So I, I don't really see risks in this, um, operation, in this partnership. I see it as, um, a net, net plus for, for really everyone, but especially the patient population and the access to all of the different kinds of services, um, that they will now have.
I, I do want to say, this is Diane, that I, I, you know, had talked about this in my opening, but, you know, the benefits, I think it would be important to say that, you know, we, we don't just feel like this is going to be a good idea, we have data to support that we will have some outcomes that we will be looking for and decreasing, you know, our inpatient stays is, um, not insignificant from, from an acute care facility, that's, that's something we all are striving to do. And also increasing ED utilization, especially when ED is, um, often can be used as primary care for those that don't have embedded services. So I, I feel like that has a real, um, both a socio and economic and clinical benefit, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. What contingency planning is in place in case the FQHC is no longer able to continue providing services?
Um, so I can better understand your question, so what would happen if, if for some reason they, they, they couldn't do this, and what would we do with this patient population?
Correct.
So if, um, we always would have the ability to make sure that we open up and try to get people into some of our practices, it wouldn't be the same wraparound. But remember, we are a, um, part of the Yale New Haven Health System, and with that, we do have, um, we have medical practices available to us. So, and again, we are, and we are committed to the residency program, so again, we would, we would just try to re- realign that. You know, I, I think it's, now I shouldn't say it goes without saying, you know, nobody in healthcare is willing to, or I have, actually don't even think they legally can walk away from their patients if something were to happen. The contingency would have to be, we would have to figure that out. I mean, that's, that's part of our obligation to the community. That we serve, with any of our services, I don't think it's, it's not limited to this service.
I have a follow-up to that. Do, have you done any planning? Is there anything in place? You said you would, you would like to have the ability, we would have the ability to try and get people into your medical practices. Is there a plan in place already?
So we always have a plan in place for when we have an abrupt change in service. And we actually go into what's called our emergency operations plan. And you first do, and so that kind of, anything can go into that, you go with what are the needs of the patients, what are your resources you have available? And then you get the decision-makers and you start moving that. If there was an abrupt closure with any services, including this service, we would be enacting that clinical, um, emergency operations plan, which quite honestly proven to be extraordinarily effective during COVID, where we were able to have closures of ICUs and, and expand ICUs in another part of the system, so um, it wouldn't be different, it wouldn't be outside of that, but we would be taking that responsibility to work within our license under an, an emergency plan for patient care.
Yeah, so the, the, the comment I would make to the question is that, um, one of the things that is planned is that we're going to have a joint, um, committee board of the, um, Greenwich Hospital and Family Centers Healthcare that will be ongoing and working on the, um, delivery of services and, um, keeping abreast of the changing needs, et cetera. And so it's highly unlikely that there would be
Surprise.
this kind of a problem where automatically or, or quickly, Family Centers would have to exit this work. We, we don't, that's a rare thing to happen in the FQHC world. Um, earlier on, um, Diane mentioned there are other FQHCs in this region who very close to us on the borders of Greenwich on either side, um, who could also be called upon in an emergency to pick up patients. But we, we certainly, uh, don't see any reason why Family Centers Healthcare would exit, um, precipitously rapidly, rapidly without any ongoing plan, and that the, uh, chances of it are very small, but I understand that. You, you raised the question, and I do think that we will address any issues that were coming up and see very far in advance if we were running into issues around delivery of service between our joint, um, hospital and Family Centers, uh, committee.
Thank you, go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you. Pages eleven and twelve of the first completeness letter responses dated September twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three refer to the community benefits grant that will be established by Greenwich Hospital to ensure the family centers have the resources it needs to maintain and expand access and primary care. However, there is little stated about what the grant will provide. Please provide details about what this grant entails, how Greenwich Hospital will ensure that Family Centers has funds to continue to provide care.
Um, may I just
Yes.
briefly, uh, interrupt, could you please refer to page number so we could follow? You want to answer the community?
I have that. It's page Bates page number three thirty one and three thirty two. And I think your camera has slightly moved um, attorney Feldman because, oh wait, oh. Sorry, that's the person in front of you. I can see you again. I thought that was you. I'm sorry.
We're gonna take a. Mr. Kelly, I mean.
Uh, yeah, sure. Yeah, well, but um, what's happening with the um. The the community grant is that it it's it's including both in-kind um donations from the hospital. But also um. Working with us annually on our budget around um projected operating losses. So it's it's our anticipation and of course, it's, you know, pending your approval. Um, will be a grant that should really ensure that the patients are fully cared for. And that family centers does not experience an operating loss. Um, and will um allow us to also access any additional. Um, national opportunities for specialty care and studies. And and that those will also be taken into consideration on an annual basis. As we um adjust the the community benefit grant. But our understanding of the community benefit grant is that it is a strong commitment. From Greenwich Hospital to ensure that the patient population is cared for adequately. And that's why we'll be working together with a joint board um into the future. Um, monitoring uh the the operating costs and the needs of the the uh ongoing two clinics.
And I I would just add, you know, I would, this is Diane, I would just add from the Greenwich Hospital perspective. Is that we recognize that we will no longer be billing for these services. On some of these patients that obviously have been have billable insurances. And that revenue will go over and and that'll go under the um, the F Q, FQHC federally qualified on health center model. And we also recognize there that some of the expenses will then be turning over to the FQHC. And with any new program through as often, we all live this in healthcare, a shortcoming. A growing, if you will, that not everything will cover that. We feel an obligation to make sure that we are still part of of ensuring that these patients are getting cared for in a way that they're accustomed to. So I feel very, very confident and I take my responsibility as as leading a not-for-profit, that a fiduciary responsibility. But feel very confident that having us be part of the this new relationship, we'll be able to oversee that. And maybe all and make sure that that support is where it needs to go with our patients. I'm I'm gonna give you a small example of this commitment. You know, it's it's nationally known that the more transparent we have with a um, a shared medical record. Um, will enhance the care of patients. This was a significant expense that the family center took on. In order to make this step even closer possibly. It's not something that most FQHCs can do on their own, but they did that. But so there there's, there's financials on both sides of it. But we want to make sure that we're still contributing to this care, the care of our patients. And so it'll be a reckoning, if you will. There'll be a reckoning of the balance sheet on a regular basis through this joint committee, if that's, if that's helpful.
Okay, and just to follow up, um page four, the prefile public hearing issues. Responses reads Greenwich Hospital will subsidize reasonable operating losses of the family centers. Can you please define what the reasonable operating losses are and who determines if the losses are reasonable? I'm assuming the board, but.
So we've had, you know, we we've had a lot of experience running in an operating loss with with our clinic. That's not new. It's not new for any organization. So we we know for this number of patient population, what it is that we lose every year. So we have a history of reasonable. It's not just an arbitrary number and we've shared that very closely with the family center. So we will be looking at that loss, like this is what we're used to losing and we will, so that gives us a very good benchmark. Um, so we're not gonna be asking them to outperform that and turn that around by ten. Nor are we in um ask them to actually um increase that loss by ten. So we, you know, it's reasonable is based on our experience of what it costs to take care of our patients.
So would it be Greenwich Hospital that was making that?
Yes, I'm sorry, Diane Kelly from Greenwich Hospital.
Okay.
And we've shared that loss with the family center.
Okay, thank you. On page eleven of the September twenty ninth completeness responses letter. Greenwich Hospital says that they will maintain clinically and financially involved unless either party withdraws from the agreement. What would cause Greenwich Hospital to withdraw from the agreement? And how would that affect the center's ability to function and serve patients?
Again, that's Bates page three thirty one.
I don't know. Let's see, what would um? May I just have one minute?
Yes, of course.
You know, this one is um, I can't imagine, you know, the only thing that. If something came up that we hadn't discussed, I actually don't even want to answer. I I really can't come up with what would cause us to undo this relationship. Because we will be part of the board that's, that's governing it. So we would be early on in discussing any major changes. So what would a major change be? Well, but you know what? Let me answer this and I hope my, our attorneys don't get mad at me for this. But we are committed to being in Greenwich, Connecticut. The FQHC. Um, our our board is very committed to having further beyond Greenwich. But we have to have a presence in Greenwich. So that is um, that is important. Which is why this, this is such a good relationship because their foundation is built in Greenwich. We of course serve beyond Greenwich. And would be happy to expand it, but um, location. Because it's part of the foundation and the bylaws that our medical staff function under is supporting in our community local access.
Okay, thank you. How will the proposal improve access and quality for patients in the primary service area?
Bob, you're gonna take that?
Yes, um, well. I think it will, I think it will improve access because of the um. The amount of, I don't know, outreach, if you will, or tentacles that family centers, various programs have. Throughout the community and we know that we are dealing with um often a a um population. That is both income constrained. And um, sometimes new to the area. And so finding and and accessing healthcare is sometimes challenging. Around language, but also um is uh. Something that is often based on word of mouth in certain communities and and based on trust. And we have a, a great deal of um programming and and professional relationships. With with people both in 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 public housing and in people living in marginalized situations. Where we have access to them and we have built a great deal of trust. And it it's been our experience that in building that trust. It does help them to access um healthcare as well as other services that would be beneficial to them. So I do think just our extensive access to various potential patient populations. Is in and of itself gonna be a great advantage.
Thank you.
I I would like to just add to that, if I may.
Please.
Um, again, so as as um Mr. Arnold just mentioned, the proposal will obviously allow for the primary care. And I can't express enough the the need for embedded on behavioral health services in the area. Now, in Greenwich alone, over eighty-six percent of the adult visits and over ninety percent of the pediatric visits. Our patients um reside, our people residing in the town of Greenwich. We actually serve many more people in our hospital than Greenwich residents. So we really want to make sure we're expanding and have something to offer to people that live in Stanford and beyond that. Um, it's, you know, it's um, again, we 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 serve a much larger community. And when we have you come into our hospital for emergency services or inpatient services. Your transition to the next level of care is our responsibility. And having access to an FQHC that can really expand um, you know, services to a comprehensive program. Will help us fulfill that obligation. Um, especially if it's, you know, a um Stanford area or even if it's in the New York market.
Okay, thank you. My next question goes to, how often do you expect specialists to be available in the family center?
So the the specialists that we have access to now, it's a rotation that they work with us. So are they embedded in the, they're not embedded in the clinic per se. They're available to our patients as needed. Um, so we we wouldn't see that changing. You know, having access to specialty care is important. It's also an important part of our our resident program. So if the page, if the resident is seeing a patient that has a, uh, I don't know, a cardiology has a heart issue. That resident also learns a lot by following the patient and having rotations with our our cardiologists. So they're not necessarily embedded on a day-to-day, but they're available as a consultation service. Which honestly, that's how all of our, all of our specialty care is provided, whether it's, whether it's a clinic. Or it's, it's, you know, the specialists are consultative. Um, all of our specialists that are part of the Yale New Haven Health System. And um, down here in Greenwich, as we are, the Yale School of Medicine. And then we also have some of our community specialists that, you know, they, we treat people regardless of their ability to pay.
Um, I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm just not clear. So you have a patient at the family centers who needs to see a cardiologist. What is the expected wait time for that patient to get to see a cardiologist at the, at the, at family centers?
It would go as if they were any other patient. It would be based on the referring physician making contact with that cardiologist. If it's a routine, I don't even, I can't even tell you what our routine wait time is. Maybe it's two or three weeks. If it's an emergency, they they have, they use the cha, the tools they have today and they do direct contact with the office. Um, with it, with the heart and vascular program now. You know, it's, it's not different because of it being clinic patients. It's, it would be the same thing if Diane Kelly showed up at her primary care and and needed a cardiology visit. It's, they have, our practices are part of this program.
Yeah, and and I I would add to that, that um with our existing clinic operations. We already have special specialists um scheduled and coming in to um the clinics. And and actually, the Holly Hill Lane Clinic was built and designed to have the space. To bring in um numerous specialty um services. Or uh on a weekly, monthly basis. And I I don't know, our chief health officer may want to add to, comment about. Say your name again.
Hi, Dennis Torres, Family Centers. Um, so for a little context, with, since we've been operating the FQHC. We've been collaborating with the hospital on specialty services um from the very beginning. Uh, most particularly with radiology, with um OB. Um, so that there's a seamless um continuum from our clinic into those services that are um needed for the patient. There is through the um. Uh, through the the clinic at seventy-five Holly Hill, there are a number of, and I don't have the schedule in front of me. A number of specialists that come through monthly, as Bob said. So that includes um podiatry, cardiology, OB. Um, uh, we we will be adding psychiatry, there's nutrition, diet. Um.
Gerontology.
Oh, of course, gerontology. Um. Drawing a blank, I don't have it, but you get it, like the specialty of things that are typically hard to access in a, in a, in an FQHC. Come with this um collaboration, which we're really excited about for for patients. Because as you said, you might go to your doctor today and find that you need a cardiology visit or you might need to see a GI. Um, GI and GI comes through too, and GI being the hardest, I'll I'll say at this point. Um, but they have set up um planned visits of i- i- into the clinic space. And um, we're able to accommodate those needs um for specialty care.
To your clients who do need to sign up for those specialists, are they normally able to get in fairly quickly? Or what is their wait time to get in with that specialist?
Are you asking from the FQHC or from the Greenwich Clinic?
From the FQHC, um, they said that they have the, you know, the rotating schedule of monthly, um, of monthly specialists. So I'm wondering, is it usually you can get in to see the specialist that month or do you have to wait till the next month is more of mine? How far in advance does that specialist get booked up?
I just want to clarify that those monthly schedules are at the current clinic at seventy-five Holly Hill Lane.
Okay.
Which is our clinic, that's why, that's why I was asking.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry. Uh, the Holly Hill Clinic that you were just telling me about, the monthly specialists. How often is it, can you get in for the specialist that's coming that month or do you normally have to wait to the month after?
I'm gonna ask, um, is Priscilla still, she just, she just walked out.
I think, um.
Eric, Dr. Santucci, she might be able to answer that.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Karen Santucci.
If you could come down to the front because it's a very long table and a very tiny screen. And I'll have to swear you in, so please state your name for the record and your title.
Yes, my name is Karen Anne Santucci, M.D. I am the chief medical officer of Greenwich Hospital. Good morning.
Good morning. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear and solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, the testimony you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late. I just had an unavoidable conflict. My sincere apology. Um, to address the question, I think the reason our team has had a little bit of a difficult time answering it is because it's truly. Um, specialty specific. It may be that for GYN, where we have clinics on Friday and we have a dedicated maternal fetal medicine doctor who's board certified. In OB-GYN and specialty trained in MFM, she's there and she's available. We can get a patient in pretty quickly. For a specialty where almost the world struggles, like dermatology, someone may need to wait a month or two. Now, certainly, if there's an urgent issue, as our folks have stated. We will do everything to expedite that visit and we will arc up our concerns to our specialists and make sure that they're seen in a timely fashion. And I think it's also important to share with the group that our medical staff, being on medical staff at Greenwich Hospital. As well as being part of our academic health system, Yale New Haven Health. We ascribe and comply with the vision, mission, and values of our health system. And our mission, our values are to take care of our community, our population. And this medical staff is very dedicated and we're pretty fortunate having a team of people. Um, dermatologists, podiatrists, um. But uh, many folks, ophthalmologists, as I mentioned, gynecology, neurology. Where. where folks dedicate either mornings or afternoons on a regular basis, pulmonologists to take care, to take care of these patients. And our patients that we see currently in our outpatient center are not treated any differently from the patients who may live two blocks away from the hospital and come from a very different demographic. Our patients are treated fairly respectfully and we make sure that they get the highest level of care in, in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that, that from, so Dr. Santucci spoke about the clinics as they operate at Holly Hill. We've been working in partnership with Greenwich Hospital since we've opened up our FQHC. And our patients at the FQHC have been afforded the same access. So I think that, that the answer to the question is that whether they were coming from Family Centers FQHC or Greenwich Hospital's clinic, they've been receiving the same level of access and they will continue all to receive the same level of access in the future. And, and I will point out that just a little bit of a side benefit of, of this transition is that some of the primary care that we're doing in the Wilbur Pet Clinic will transition over to the new Holly Hill site, which will free up space in the Wilbur Pet Clinic for us to expand dental care, which is sorely needed by this population and, and very limited in terms of access. We only have one chair at this point. And this will enable us to expand to three chairs and, and really penetrate the population's need much greater.
Thank you. If Family Centers decides to stop providing a specialist service or cannot find a specialist willing to see patients at the family center, what would happen to those patients?
No, I'm sorry, I don't think I, could, could you repeat that question?
Sure, of course. If Family Centers decides to stop providing a certain specialist service or cannot find a specialist who is willing to see patients at FC, what will happen to those patients?
Well, it's, it's sort of inconceivable that we're going to stop providing any specialty area and that we will do whatever is necessary to acquire that specialty.
Dennis wants to.
Yeah, Dennis.
Yes, so Dennis Torres, the, our care managers, our healthcare managers, often if we can't find a specialist locally, we'll look into Stanford. We've sent patients up to New Haven. We provide transportation. So with all, all the barriers that might hinder someone from getting to a specialist up the line, we remove those and make sure that patients have access. As part of our joint commission philosophy, that we close all these open, loose ends and we make sure that that happens. It might not be overnight, because sometimes it does take, as you know, specialty care is sometimes hard to access. But it's not impossible and we, we, we make sure that we make those connections.
I, this is Diane from Greenwich. I would add that I actually think that this proposal actually solves for this and makes this more, brings us closer together and that it no longer would just be their issue to help resolve. That would be our issue as well, because we'd have a joint responsibility and we'd have the access of the Yale New Haven Health System, which is, you just reminded me, Dennis, is that, you know, there is a pretty robust FQHC partnership up there in New Haven that we know we would be committed to ensuring that we don't hit that road bump.
Great, thank you. That concludes my questions for now. I believe my colleague Yedira has some questions for the applicants as well.
Yes, good morning again. This is Yedira McGlaughlin and we're OHS. And my first question is on page twenty of the application, the response to question F. Are these patients not already receiving excellent and culturally competent care by Greenwich Hospital? And besides everything being in one place, what other improvements will family center patients benefit from?
So can you just repeat the beginning of it? I'm sorry. Can you give us the base number, please?
Yeah.
The base number, please, for the question. So why don't I take a stab while we're looking for the base number? Is that what we're waiting for?
Yeah, I, my printed version did not come with Bates numbers on it, so I know.
So, can, can you please repeat the question?
Do you want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, that, that, so I want to be succinct, if you, if you don't mind.
Sure. So in response to question F of the application, aren't these patients already receiving excellent and culturally competent care by Greenwich Hospital? And besides everything being in one place, what other improvements will family center patients benefit from?
It's page twenty-seven, base number. And it's in response to discuss how low-income persons, racial and ethnic minorities, disabled persons, and other underserved groups will benefit from this proposal F.
Can you, can you please give us a minute to find it? Because I believe we already answered the question in the application, but we'll review it. Thank you. This is Diane, and I'll take this. And I'm glad to say it's what I was thinking you were asking, but I wanted to make sure. And thank you for the question. So Yale New Haven Health System and Greenwich Hospital alike have actually been on a very deliberate mission and vision of ensuring that we are culturally competent in the care that we're providing and that we're sensitive to cultural differences to equitable equity. We actually have created an entire division with leadership. In fact, I at Greenwich Hospital is, represents the leadership through the system along with one of our physician partners. So this is part of our strategic priorities for twenty twenty-three, four, and five. It's about what we, you know, we'll reevaluate it after five. And it's based on the fundamentals of health equity and cultural competency of our caregivers. That is included in that is the CMS framework for health equity that we're using. We're also using for the framework of that is the joint commission standards that we all are building our programs on. But how does that translate here locally? We actually participate in our community needs assessment and looking at disparities of care, looking at things that may be barriers to access to care. That's with our community partners. Through this journey of making sure that we are really embedding this in everything that we're doing, we've actually made our Community Action Council part of our formal board governance process, that we are monitoring the results of the community, the the community assessment results. And we are monitoring our actions and reporting it to the board on a consistent basis to make sure that we actually are performing into those priorities. It's, it's actually probably the biggest sea change I've seen in governance in a health system, and I've been doing this for a while. So how are we doing that and how do we make sure that's, that's important to the, the family centers? I will tell you, that was actually a question to make sure that our vision in this, this frame was aligned. The board wanted to make sure that this was a priority of the family centers. But it really was, it was an easy answer because it's the hallmark of what they do. It's the framework of what they do is, is making sure that all people have access to equitable and culturally diverse care. So I will tell you that it's embedded in all of what we're doing. It's a board priority. And again, social determinants are assessed at many levels within the organization of Greenwich Hospital, including the coming into the clinic, coming into our emergency department. And we actually, even if you're inpatient, we, we are doing that. We have an entire population health team that are, we are working to close these, these gaps. And we are doing a lot of, which is why I'm really grateful that the family centers went ahead and be part of Epic. Because it is a big part of our data analytics, is looking for data that's reporting on a big level. Are we having disparities of care based on any socioeconomic or racial diversities and are we seeing clinical outcomes with that? So it's, it's also part of our quality program. I hope that answers your question.
So to the second part of your question, what would change with, with family centers? I would add two things to what Diane Kelly said. And that is that Family Centers has a majority of its board as consumers utilizing the services of the FQHC. And we have a community advisory group comprised of patients as well, making recommendations about their experience utilizing the services and, and any part of it. And those, that input is taken and included in policy changes within the, within the healthcare centers.
I would just add one more to that, that our, our staff is also reflective of the populations we serve.
Okay, thank you. My next question. If Family Centers decides to terminate a service, please explain the process for the service to return to Greenwich Hospital.
Well, yeah, I, um.
Can we have a minute, please?
Of course.
Sure.
So I, I guess, I guess, to begin that.
Say your name.
Bob Arnold. Yeah. It, it's practically unthinkable to me that we would discontinue the service. I know this came up earlier. Something would have to be catastrophic because, again, we, we are, you know, a part of Ursa and, and the network of community health centers across the nation. And that there, it's a very rare thing for an, an FQHC to discontinue service. I, we did mention earlier that we're going to have a joint committee from the hospital and family centers to oversee the ongoing work of these two clinics. And so it's, if we run into issues, whatever issues we run into should very likely be resolvable through the work of the joint commission that we will have. But there's, there is a very infinitesimal, infinitesimal possibility that we're going to exit the, the primary care area. And I think earlier, there was a question that touched partially on this that Diane Kelly responded to in which she said that the hospital would be open through its many practices to absorb patients. And there are three other FQHCs within several miles who would probably also be available should there be something really catastrophic. But we certainly are not anticipating anything along those lines. And we have no plans of closing any of our practice.
Thank you. My next question. Will outreach efforts to advise of this change consist of for current patients of Greenwich Hospital and for any anticipated new patients of the family centers?
Can you restate the question, please?
Sure. What will outreach efforts to advise of this change consist of for current patients of Greenwich Hospital and for anticipated new patients of the family centers?
Why did you start? So this is Diane from Greenwich Hospital. And that we would, like we do with all of our patients, whenever there's a change in their practice or in their care provider, we notify them in writing. We also have a patient advisory council, where on that council, we have our, some of our clinic patients and have started talking about this possibility, so we get their feedback in the process. So we would be doing that kind of a communication. But we, we absolutely do a very formal written communication and giving people the opportunity to ask questions and discuss this. That's part of our process when we do any of this kind of change in services and so forth.
And likewise, we would also notify our patient population, although not all of our patient population would necessarily be moving to the Holly Hill site. However, the distance between the Holly Hill site and the Wilbur Pet site, for instance, is only a few miles and it's on the same bus route. So there wouldn't be any sort of hardship really for the patient population. And in fact, another large public housing development that we draw quite a few patients from is, is very close to the Holly Hill location and would be much more convenient for that cohort of our patient population.
Thank you. My next couple of questions are going to be related to cost and cost effectiveness of the proposal. How will the proposal affect the cost of services for patients?
The cost to the patient, is that the question? Or just cost in general, just, I'm just trying to.
The cost of services to the patients.
So that one is, and we thought a lot about this because today we don't have the ability to provide a wraparound service. You don't pay one fee, if you were to pay. You know, there, you know, we have a, we have a range in the, of what, what people can pay for. But, you know, your, your medical visit is your medical visit. And if you need behavioral health, that's another visit, that's another cost. If you need to see and consult, that's another cost. So when we look at it, and if you're going into a patient-centered medical home, the overall cost should be lower because you're not getting those separate different bills, if you will. And we know there'll be a reduction in inpatient and we know there'll be a reduction in ED, which are very costly. So our goal is that this is a, this is a enhanced value. So our goal is that this is a, this is a enhanced value for a lower cost. Because we would be moving away from that episodic billing to a more wraparound service.
Yeah, I agree and think that the the cost should not be an issue because both Greenwich Hospital currently and Family Centers provides substantial financial assistance to the patient population. And we, of course, follow Ursa's regulations around financial assistance. And as far as the fees that patients are paying currently at the Greenwich Hospital clinics, they they would not change upon the transition to family centers.
Okay, thank you. And please explain why some patients who transitioned to the FQHC will end up with higher costs.
We don't, we don't believe they will to the patient. He just answered.
You you did actually mention that in your application. I can draw your eye to.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Let's see, I believe it is. And actually, in in the completeness letter as well, you mentioned it quite a few times. Let's see, charity care.
Hearing Officer Novy, may I just point out that Mr. Arnold, I believe, just answered the question regarding there will be the whether there will be any negative impact for the patient regarding cost. I think we heard Ms. Kelly say that there were no, these were different services. We're comparing apples to oranges. And then we heard Mr. Arnold say that we will honor the cost structure that is currently in place at Greenwich Hospital for these patients. So I'm not sure how we can answer the question any differently at this point.
Okay. I will be asking questions later. I would, I think during the break, I would ask you to go over your, I think it's the second. I have paper copies, sorry. Review the financial applica, the financial information provided, and especially the charts that start on Bates page thirty seven and the answer prior to thirty seven. On base page thirty six. But we can move on. I'll ask that question later after a break, so.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Please explain the cost differences between Yale New Haven Hospital's assistance policy and the plans submitted by family centers.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I was I was reading something. I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. Please explain the cost differences between Yale New Haven Hospital's assistance policy and the plan submitted for family centers.
I think that's what we were just referring to, right? So we did recognize it that we and the family centers is going to be honoring our policy of assistance for these patients, for the this patient population. So there is no increase for that populated, for the patients. So is that the, is that what you're looking for? Like, we did recognize there was a difference and we're closing that gap by making sure we're honoring what it is that our patients are used to.
So just so I can make sure I understand, all patients coming from the Greenwich Hospital will still continue under the Yale New Haven current payment, which goes up to, I believe, that was four hundred and fifty percent of or four hundred percent of poverty line?
I think it's very, this is Joan Feldman speaking, it's very difficult to say all patients. We're talking about a payer mix that is Medicare, Medicaid, self insurance, I mean, commercial insurance and self pay. The answers are going to vary depending upon which payer you're speaking to. So if you could ask the question to us in a specific fashion, I think we already testified that both providers have very generous financial assistance policies. They are different, but the bottom line is that both will have policies that allow accommodations for patients with financial need so that no patient is, cost does not become a barrier for access to healthcare. That's the bottom line. And to the extent.
Joan, I can't quote you on this. It would be, this information came from that.
Right. I thought, I think, I think my clients have already said that. And I'm just reiterating what the testimony already has been. The question keeps coming up in various forms. I'm just trying to clarify. That's all. It doesn't have to be testimony.
Yeah, I I can speak to the to the family centers policy. I can say that the cost of the service is never allowed to be a barrier for any patient service. So that we will, you know, there's certain set costs, but if there's a demonstration that that's difficult, we have the capacity and do waive that service or reduce that fee greater for the patient. So then, and and by the way, that is, that is a standard procedure with Ursa-related community health centers across the country. That's why community health centers exist. They exist for patients who have no other option or can't pay anything for their healthcare. That's the whole premise behind it. And so we certainly stand by that completely.
Okay, thank you. My next question, on page eight of the September twenty nine, twenty twenty three first completeness letter responses. Is this that F that the FQHC will save one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars per patient per year? Please elaborate on this statement. Is this saving to the individual, the family centers, or to the insurer?
Page three twenty eight.
We have a minute, please, officer Walker. Hey, we're back. Hi there. Thank you for that moment. So we we actually, as as everybody in healthcare is, works really hard to be evidence-based. And so the number that you're referring to, the one thousand two hundred, one thousand two hundred and sixty-three reduction, reduction in the cost per care was actually used as a reference point on why we're believing this model. And it was under an exhibit, it's called the Matrix Globe Advisor, and also the N A C H O, you know, National Association of Community Health Centers. It's a community health center chart book that gave us just supporting this model and what we could expect to see as a reduction. So it was a reference, so to be clear about that. And we do believe, we we have evidence of that in our own homework, if you will, by taking that reference and then looking at the outcome of what Yale knew up at New Haven. And they saw that reduction in inpatient and then ED care. So that would all reduce the overall cost of care. So that's, it was more of a evidence base to this practice, if you will. Thank you. You're muted. You're muted, did you?
Sorry about that. In the same completeness letter response letter, which was dated September twenty nine, twenty twenty three, table three on page nine, taking a look on table three of page nine. Please explain why the cost incurred by commercial patients will more than double on the first year and then increase the second year by almost eighty dollars. Will these increases remain common?
Page three twenty nine.
Could you repeat your question, please?
We're muted, are we? No.
Yes. So in the same completeness letter response letter, which was dated September twenty ninth, if you take a look on table three, page nine, please explain why the cost incurred by commercial patients will more than double on the first year and then increase on the second year by almost eighty dollars. Will increases of this size remain common?
My name is John Wunsch from Family Centers. I'm prepared to answer the question.
Okay, before you are allowed to answer your question, if you would just raise your hand so I know who you are, thank you. And then I'm going to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm as the case may be that testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
And if you could say your name a little louder and spell your last name for the for the recorder, please.
My name is John Wunsch, W U N S C H.
Go ahead.
The rates in shown for fiscal year twenty three for family centers have not been negotiated in ten years and don't reflect what's currently offered in the market from insurance companies. And we're currently renegotiating our rates right now and expect the the bigger bumps to occur within the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Then the twenty-six fiscal year only reflects an inflationary increase.
Okay, thank you. And please outline the steps that you will take to lower the burden on patients who will be facing higher charges.
So it's just from a Greenwich perspective, is, I think, I think from.
Yeah, could could you repeat that? Sorry.
No worries. Please outline the steps that will be taken to lower the burden on any patients who will be facing higher charges.
Just for clarification, please, you mean with respect to commercial insurance? Is that what you're, yes, okay, what he just said. No, you.
Yeah, I'm trying to, so the patients' charges from the the insurance-covered patient shouldn't be affected at all. It's the increase from the reimbursement from the insurance companies themselves that we're renegotiating now. The the patient co-pay is not going to change. We, so we don't anticipate there'll be additional charges that patients need relief for.
Okay, thank you. And how will the proposal affect the diversity of healthcare providers and patient choice in the region?
How will the proposal affect?
How would the proposal affect the diversity of healthcare providers and patient choice in the region?
They'll have more choice. And I'm 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 a little lost in this one because I don't think that's a barrier for us. So I'm just just trying to think about how will it affect it? I mean, we are going to continue with patient choice. Both organizations work to have diversity. So I I think it'll be remained with a high consistency of options for people. Actually, they're gonna, they're gonna have patients who go moving from the FQHC from Greenwich to the FQHC will have access to more services. So they're in effect, more people will be providing those services, so they'll have more available to them. And I know the FQHC has a strong commitment to diversity, so I guess it could be improved, but I would have to say I I think we do a nice job at it at Greenwich as well. So I'm, I think we'll maintain that high standard. Not sure that really answers your question.
But I also think the diversity, you know, you could utilize the term diversity in many different ways. But earlier on, I think Diane Kelly said that along with this transfer, the the hospital is providing some other very clearly identified needs of intensive outpatient care with within the community. And so that's going to add diversity to the to the range of care that we see the need for in the FQHCs. So I do think that that form of diversity is is a big step and is is very helpful. But we do have other FQHCs who we may share patients with depending on what kinds of specialties or or things they offer. So there's a great deal of diversity and it seems like it's 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 increasing.
I would just add, if I if I'm understanding the.
Oh, wait, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna pause you for a second because you're the second person to start talking without saying your name. Oh, wait, I'm just gonna pause you for a second because you're the second person to start talking without saying your names.
Oh, sorry.
For the court reporter, name, then speak.
Got it, sorry. Dennis Torres. I would just add that this this collaboration is adding choices. It's not taking away choices because staff from the hospital are staying. Patients that are used to seeing their same providers, that's not going away. Patients that are used to seeing the same providers at Wilbur Pack at Family Centers, that's not going away. So, that no choices are being removed. The only choice that's, is really an additional one. So, they're going to be added services, added benefits of the combination of the two.
This is Diane Kelly from Greenwich. And I just would add also that our clinic is relatively small. And we will increase the amount of people that we're reaching, which in effect has a greater impact on the equity and availability of equitable and diverse care.
Okay, thank you all for your answers. My last question is, does family centers have the capacity to accept all of the patients that are served by Greenwich Hospital? And if not, what percentage of Greenwich's current patients will be served by the family centers? I'm sorry, let me, let me clear something up real quick. The second part, if not, what percentage of Greenwich Hospital's current patients will be served by the family centers?
We have the capacity, Bob Arnold. We have the capacity to serve 100% of the patients who would be coming from the Greenwich Hospital clinics.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes my questions.
All right, so, at this point, I'm going to suggest a 20-minute break. It is now, we'll call it 10:55. And so, we can come back here at 11:15, give everybody a chance. And then Steve and I will be asking some follow-up questions after the break. Okay, I ask that everybody turn off your camera and mute yourself during your break. We are going to try to do that, but it is good if everybody does it as well. So, we'll take a 20-minute break now. Thank you for all being really patient through this long haul. Okay, so I'll give the warning now. As you just heard by Zoom, if you would like, you are now being recorded. If you do not consent to being recorded, I ask that you leave the Zoom hearing at this time. If you remain in the hearing, you give your consent to being recorded. All right, we have a charity fellow in my bag. Good morning, everybody. It is now 11:16 a.m. and I'm going to resume the hearing. I did just make the announcement about Zoom. So, for those of you who just walked in, you consent to being recorded by remaining in this hearing or on camera. All right, at this point, we will continue with questions from OHS. We will next move to Mr. Lazarus.
Thank you. Good morning. Stephen Lazarus, L A Z A R U S. I have a couple of questions to follow up. First of all, thank you so much for providing a lot of detail. That was very helpful regarding this proposal. And I think we've heard a lot from the applicants regarding the advantages for this proposal when it comes from a patient perspective. And I think that was thoroughly discussed and we do appreciate that. However, this is an actual termination by Greenwich Hospital, legally speaking, of the services. So, to that point, can the hospital talk a little bit about the need for terminating this service beyond just the patient perspective? And what are the advantages and the reasons that it's sort of a need for the hospital? I think that would be appreciated.
This is Diane Kelly, president of Greenwich Hospital. And the need for this came from a, it came from a patient perspective. It just, and it has remained the focus. It's a small clinic that we really are not able to expand, given the fact that we're not having, we don't have a patient-centered medical home model. We are not, this, we are primarily in acute care and specialty care service. So, we have always and wanted to continue the partnership with the FQHC who works in this space. We did not want to duplicate services at a time when resources are very scant. I think we talked about the primary resource that really looked like it would be prohibitive was we knew this population, based on our community assessment need, would benefit greatly from having more behavioral health embedded in their everyday care. That is one of our biggest shortages, not just Greenwich or Fairfield County or Connecticut, but it's the state. So, we really leaned towards the people that are already doing this work and doing it well. So, it really, it really was building on a relationship. We've already had strong partnerships. We want to grow our services. We couldn't grow them to the way that is best optimal for this population. So, it lent itself to look to the people that have already been doing this in an expert way and expanding on that with their collaboration. So, I do understand and appreciate your question because I, I know that's the wording, the closing. It just bugs me, but that's not for this, that's my own personal. Because we are not, we are so committed to making sure that we are involved in this in this care going forward.
Thank you. And we appreciate the, you know, the concern for the patients. And I think that's a, that's a great thing. Was there, having said that, was there an analysis performed to understand this? I know you gave some reasons why it'd be advantageous for the patients and, you know, why Greenwich Hospital could not grow this as a patient need sort of was growing as part of the CHNA. Was there like a financial analysis or some sort of a study done to get to this point?
Yeah, so, with every one of our departments, we do do a financial analyst and reckoning every year. Actually, it's an ongoing process. This department has always cost the organization more than it brings in. That's, but that's true with most of our departments. As you may know, Greenwich Hospital had hosted its first loss in I don't know how many decades. So, that itself is not a driver. It's an unfortunate situation. But all, most healthcare are finding themselves in that situation. But what we, so we, we knew that this would require more resources by the FQHC. So, we knew that we would be continuing to spend money in order to shore up the care for this group and expand it. Our choice was continue to lose money and not expand what we're able to do. So, the idea is let's spend the money, which is the same as losing. If you're coming from a health from my seat, whether I spend it or lose it, it doesn't matter. It's a negative off your balance sheet. Doesn't matter how it got there. But we knew if we spent the money with the FQHC, we would actually be able to expand what we were offering to that group of patients and expand the number of people we could serve. You know, in the, in the community health needs assessment, it actually showed that we are, we really, there were more people in this community that were eligible than we were reaching. So, we really, in the FQHC's model, the Greenwich Family Center is built to reach this, you know, they're in the schools, reaching out the children before they even graduate from high school. That, you know, I always think it's really smart in healthcare is go to the people who are doing something really well. You don't have to duplicate it. Go to them and partner with them. That's how we're going to solve these, these health costs. And that's how we're going to improve what we can offer. So, I don't believe that we have to be everything to everybody, but we have to be open to other people's expertise.
Thank you. So, would you be able to provide a copy of the analysis that was performed in this as a late file? So, we can have evidence for the record?
It would just be the P and L from our last, our profit and loss statement from maybe the last year of the clinic where it showed that we needed to support it by a couple million dollars, right?
Right. Are you focusing, Steve, on the financial analysis or the planning, strategic planning analysis?
Well, I think both, but I think the strategic, from a strategic perspective, would be nice to see the analysis that was performed. And it can certainly be backed up by the, you know, pointed towards the P and L as evidence. But we're looking for the actual plan that was utilized to develop this project for the need for it.
Oh, the needs part. Yeah, we have stuff from the white cap engagement.
And again, supported by the financial analysis that may be showing, you know, the losses from previous year, that would be fine.
No, we, yeah, yes, we definitely can do that. It's just going to put a few things together, like pieces of different.
So, hearing also, we would call that late file one?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a, is there an agreement? That was a formal agreement between Greenwich Hospital and Family Centers for this? And can we get a copy of that as a late file?
Yes.
Today's testimony, a few times, I think we came up and I think we're talking about some of the future decision-making and care for the patients. And the joint committee board was discussed. And it obviously seems to be a very important part moving forward. So, if you can provide some, some background, talk about the makeup of the board, the timing, when it's going to be formed, and what type of role they're going to have would be helpful.
So, Steve, just not to provide testimony, hearing, Officer Novy, but it's all set forth in the collaboration agreement that is late filed too presumably.
Okay.
But we may want to have them testify so that the public, who may not have read the exhibit two, can be informed of what's in there without having to go back and find the exhibit. Because we do have public at this hearing as well.
Do you want to say that? File, it will be in the late file number two in outlining about how that structure will look. That's Diane Kelly from Greenwich.
How many, how many members do you expect to be on that board? And what would the makeup be between Greenwich Hospital and Family Centers?
Well, it's, I don't know that you'd call it a board. It's a joint, it's a joint committee to oversee the transition and ongoing care of the, and the numbers, I don't think, have been determined.
Would it be, do you anticipate that'd be majority of Family Centers? And, or would it be equal, or one party, or would it be an equal board?
We're going to be able to provide that information in the collaboration agreement.
All right, so, I think it would be helpful as part of, when you do submit that, if you can highlight with an explanation, particularly to the board, which may, since we don't have that, won't be able to have the discussion now. There may be additional follow-up on, once we receive the late file on more details on that. Because that appears to be the key moving forward. Alicia, I think if you want to go continue with your follow-up?
Yeah, okay. My first question is, are there any services that are available at Greenwich Hospital that would not be provided at the new FQHC?
For clarifications, do you mean at the Greenwich Hospital outpatient clinic?
People who go to the Greenwich outpatient, the Greenwich outpatient clinic now, will there be services that they could have gotten at that clinic that won't be at the new FQHC?
No.
No. There was Bobby and Diane, no.
Okay. I would like to ask for a late file on the explanation of what a reasonable loss will be or how that will be decided?
Yep.
We'll call that number three. Earlier in, I believe it was Ms. Kelly's testimony, they talked about benefits from expanding the improved resident program that will be going into the new FQHC and that you had data to support that. I don't think any of that was submitted with the original application. And I would like to see some of that data on how a resident program will help.
So, we'll give you the current number of patients that our residents see today. And then we can give you what we're hoping they will see with the expansion of having more patients to see.
Okay.
I think if that's.
We need some clarification because I, hearing officer, I didn't hear Diane Kelly say there was data that demonstrates the benefits to the residents. I think she was talking generally about training physicians.
Yeah, it's, I was, and it's in our, it's in our proposal that it's under one of the benefits that will enhance our residency program by having more patients to see. So, maybe that's an assumption that more patients is better for training than few patients.
Okay, so, hold on. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So, the residency program benefits the residents in the program, the actual medical students who are doing the residency, more than the patients? Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We will, we will withdraw that as a late file. Oh, wait, that's still saying it's 30 minutes, no. Did Greenwich Hospital put out an RFP for a partner for FQHC?
We did.
Okay, I would like to ask for that to be submitted as a late file.
Okay.
We'll call that number four. And then also, I would like to ask for more information. It wasn't clear to me in your testimony about what the community benefit grant is, how it's going to work and what, I mean, I know you mentioned in-kind services would be provided. What are those services? How are they going to be? What are they going to be looking at? What they, you know, exactly what goes into this community benefits grant? Because if you're providing like a box of Band-Aids, I would like to know if that's included in your community benefit.
There is, there is, in addition to the collaboration agreement, there is also something called a community benefit grant agreement. And we can provide that as a late file five?
Yes, please. Also, just to follow up to my earlier one, if we could do, if we could get the Family Centers' response to the RFP as part of number four?
Sure.
Okay. And then one last question that I've still not cleared on. On page, on Bates' page 36, midway down the page for the question and question 20's response, it says to qualify for free care at FC, the patient's income must be at 100% or below the federal poverty level versus 250% or below at Yale, Yale-New Haven Hospital System. That is a significant difference. How will those patients who fall within the 101 and the 250% of the federal poverty level that we're getting qualified for free care at Yale-New Haven Hospital System, what will accommodations, what are you going to do for those patients?
First, I want to clarify that we do not provide free care. First, it requires that we, that's not something we do. However, if you're 100% or lower, we can discount to zero, which is just, I know it's wording, but it's important that we say it's not free care. It's just discounted care, sometimes to zero. Which is just, I know it's wording, but it's important that we say we, it's not free care, it's just discounted air, sometimes to zero. So um, I, I believe the, the second part was what happens between the one hundred and one and two hundred? Cause we, Hersa requires that we have a sliding scale for, for patients. Um, between one hundred and two hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And um, and we do, I'm, um, we have that sliding scale and that's looked at every year. The federal poverty level changes um, annually too. So we have to have our board review that and, and approve. I, the plan is to maintain that, that cost. Um, for, for patients who are already um, enrolled and um, have accepted this, this uh, as their um, as the sliding scale. I, with, with respect, could you just repeat the second part of that question?
Sure, this is actually, I read directly from the application. Uh, I said, how are you going to help those patients who would have qualified for free care? Under the Yale New Haven Hospital system because theirs goes up to two hundred and fifty percent of the poverty line. Um, those one hundred and one through two hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty line patients.
Yes, we've already agreed, and I think it was said earlier, we will honor. Those agreements with those patients um, that are currently enrolled in the, in the Greenwich outpatient clinic.
What about future patients who come in who are at those? At, you know, a brand new person who just moves to Greenwich and they're at one hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level? Wh- what will happen for that patient?
Well, if they're a new patient and they're coming into our FQHC, they would qualify for our discounts and, and sliding scale based on their income.
So their payment might be more than the grandfathered patients that come over from Greenwich?
Yeah.
Correct. And then, yeah.
Okay, and you're Mr. Torres, I just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
We get your name in at the end or the beginning at some point?
Yes, Dennis Torres.
Alright, that's it for my questions. Alright, uh, I would like, oh wait.
Can, can I just, um, if I might comment?
Yes.
On the end of Dennis's, that yes, they would come in with the new structure required by Hersa. But again, we are absolutely and always have been committed to um, not getting a fee. Not allowing the fee to deter the, the patient care. And if the patient cannot afford the, the fee according to the sliding scale. We have the ability to and can waive that fee. And reduce it to zero. Because we're just committed to this patient, patient population and we're not going to have a fee ever be a barrier for patient care. So that's a, that's a underlying girding our whole approach to patients.
Alright, uh.
Hey, Novy, I just have one follow up question. So we had talked about earlier about the, the strategic plan and the financial uh, analysis done by Greenwich Hospital. This is more for the family centers. Was there analysis done on your side and how this would affect your business? Strategically as well as financially?
Yes. Um, yes, we, we, we have analyzed how the influx would impact us. Um, with, with projections, of course, um, and projections are just that. So we don't know that the numbers will play out exactly, but given that there's a current patient base at Greenwich Hospital. We know what those numbers will be. And so we have that projection. And um, we also um, are recognizing that it benefits us through economies of scale. Because we'll have a larger patient population. And in terms of whether or not we could accommodate it, that's really where the, the community grant. Um, with the partnership of Greenwich Hospital comes in. So our intention and the plan which Greenwich Hospital agrees with for the community benefit grant. Is for us to break even on the services that we provide to the clinic patients.
Terrific. Would, can we get that as a late file six, your analysis and the explanation, any, any explanation that goes along with that?
Sure.
Thank you, that's very much appreciated. And Novy, I'm all set.
Uh, Attorney Feldman?
Yes.
Uh, any follow up questions that you would like to ask your witnesses?
No, I do not have any follow up questions.
Okay, so at this point, I would like to um, just remind our um, public that may be with us on this Zoom meeting. That we um, will be having the public portion of this at twelve eight, sorry, twelve PM. Um, and that if you would like to sign up to make a public comment, you may do so now. Either through our Zoom, um, through our Zoom chat, you can put your name and um, that you would like to make a public comment in the chat. And our staff will take down your name and call you in the order in which you register uh, at twelve PM, we will start taking those comments. If you can, or if you would like to make a comment, but you don't want to do it on Zoom. You may also email your comments to CONcomment@CT.gov. And that will be open for a week after um, after I can, uh, conclude this hearing. So you will have a week after I conclude the hearing today to get your comments and if you would like to submit written comments to us. And with that, um, I would like to take a, a short recess until public comment time at twelve PM. Uh, if we do not have public comments or public comments run quickly, then we will go ahead directly to closing statements. And um, just a reiteration of the late file. Um, with that, we will see you here back at twelve PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, welcome back everybody as Zoom just notified you. If you um, you are being recorded, if you remain in this hearing, you consent to being recorded. If you would like to revoke your consent, please um, leave the Zoom hearing at this time. Alright, for those of you just joining us, this is the public portion of today's hearing concerning the CON application filed by Greenwich Hospital. Docket number twenty-three dash three-two-six-five-six CON. We have the technical portion this morning, sign up for public comment has been ongoing. Um, just to give everybody a sense of how long we can expect the public portion today's hearing to run. I typically allow commenters to speak for three minutes, elected officials and elected appointed officials being given some flexibility. Uh, the order of comment, we had no one sign up online, so I will make a, um, a. Verbal offer now, if there's anybody that is currently in this hearing that would like to comment, would like to make a public comment. Uh, you can either put your um, enter your name into the chat right now. Or unmute yourself and turn on your camera and state that you would like to make a comment. Alright, hearing non. I will recommend that anybody that is listening to this and has not made a public comment and does not want to speak on camera today, but would like to file one via email. You will have the ability to do that for seven days, starting right, oh, we got one. Terry Kaufman, alright. Okay, Mr. Kaufman, if you could please uh, unmute yourself and turn on your camera so that we can see you. But if you could remove myself and Mr. Lazarus from the screen and actually everybody so that we could see the person speaking. Mr. Kaufman, are you there?
Good morning, I, I'm here, I'm, I'm speaking through my phone, I'm trying to get my image up on the screen, I, I.
That's fine, if you're on the phone, we, we um, you just stated that, so we, I, I acknowledge that we probably won't see you.
Okay, again, I'm trying to get the video going, um.
Just go ahead, you can, without, without the, you can give your comment without the video, if you'd like to go ahead and speak.
Thank you. So yes, my name is, is Terry Kaufman, good afternoon. Um, I am a family centers board member, but I actually wanted to speak today uh, as the father of an eight-year-old boy. Um, recently my son watched his grandfather fight a long battle with cancer. Uh, and the experience left him confused, scared and, and just really sad. Uh, my wife and I reached out to family centers because we knew our son needed help. But, but didn't really feel capable ourselves of giving him everything that we needed. Um, and while that, that help has been an absolute godsend for my son and has given incredible relief to, to my wife and to myself. But I felt really compelled to talk about uh, sort of the seamless manner in which. To, to get into the fold with family centers, to explain our concerns about our son and, and just the way that, that we were handled. Um, we weren't exactly sure what he needed. Um, so really uh, it was a process of them saying, okay, well, here's how we think we can help you. And, and really quickly um, finding somebody that was a good match uh, for our son. But also obviously uh, appropriate form, but, but whose schedule matched up uh, with an over-scheduled second grader. So uh, you know, it, it's really been very important to us, very important to, to our son. Uh, and I, I couldn't be more thankful for the way that we've been handled.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you letting me make my comment.
Thank you very much with your Kaufman.
May I have the spelling of your name, Mr. Kaufman?
Absolutely, it's Terry, T E R R Y, last name is Kaufman, K A U F M A N N.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Do we have any other? Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, so seeing as I do not have one, I will go ahead and uh, just remind everybody that you can submit written, written comments for seven days from today on CONcomment@CT.gov. Again, that's C O N, C O, M as in Mary, M as in Mary, E as in Edward, N as in Nancy, T as in Tom, at CT.gov. I'd also like, um, that will be open for seven days from today, so that will be open through Wednesday, we may, or sorry, Wednesday, April third of twenty twenty-four. Okay, seeing as we have no one else who would like to speak, I will go ahead and move us to the late files. Um, Steve, would you like to read the list of documents submitted?
Sure. Uh, Stephen Lazarus, OHS staff. So we have total of six late files. And um, the first one is the strategic and the financial analysis done by Greenwich Hospital. Was it for, to support this proposal? Second one is the uh, agreement between, that's the agreement between Greenwich Hospital and uh, family centers. Number three is a question which is asking for an explanation of what a reasonable loss would be. And how that will be decided. Four is a requesting copies of the RFP that Greenwich Hospital had put out. And the responses uh, that came back with it, along with the uh, family centers' response. Five is the community benefits grant. Um, I don't, I'm not sure exactly, were, were there any details to that, Alicia?
Um, they were going to submit uh, any information they had on the community benefits grant. Um, we haven't seen any um, any explanation of what was going to be going to that grant. Uh, and an explanation of any benefits given to uh, the FQHC in that grant.
Will include that detail. And the last I have is uh, family centers uh, analysis that was performed for strategically as well as financially are related to this proposal. And that's all the six late files I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Attorney Feldman, um, when do you and your clients expect to be able to provide this submission?
I think three weeks would be an adequate amount of time for us to pull that together. I just want to clarify that with respect to the collaboration agreement and the community ben- benefit agreement. Those agreements are in draft form. Obviously, they haven't been executed because they're subject to the approval of OHS. Clarification.
Okay, um, so three weeks from today would be April seventeenth. Now we are going into a holiday weekend, are, would you maybe like till the end of that week so you're not losing that one day?
Sure, we can always get it in earlier if we are able.
Yeah, um, so let's give you till April nineteenth, four thirty on that Friday?
Sure.
Alright, so we'll put that as a date. And as always, if you have trouble meeting that deadline or you need more time to get documents together, please let our office know. And we can work with you um, on getting you an extension if necessary.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any other questions or concerns about these late files?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so let's move to the uh, the closing argument. Attorney Feldman, um, would you like to make a closing statement?
Sure, not too long. Um, I want to thank you uh, hearing officer and OHS staff and. Uh, Dr. Gifford uh, for your attention to this matter. I believe and I hope that you'll agree that the application and the testimony that you heard today is very compelling. And that Greenwich Hospital has demonstrated that the current services provided by Greenwich Hospital clinics are different. From the services offered by family centers. Uh, they're more holistic, they're more inclusive, and they're greater in scope. Family centers has a long history of helping its patients address socioeconomic challenges. Uh, for instance, related to, as you heard, education, vocation, housing. And parenting, and you just recently heard bereavement, counseling. Um, it's well established in the literature. Uh, that by addressing the social determinants of health, patient outcomes will improve. And that when patients have more access to more social support services. That wrap around the medical visit, the medical portion of the visit. The patients will make less visits, avoidable visits to the emergency department. And management of their chronic conditions will result in low, lower um, inpatient admissions. And just to be clear, because it seemed to have been a focus of many of the questions. The current clinics that are operated by Greenwich Hospital are very small. In terms of the amount of patients that they care for currently. And with respect to the cost issues. Uh, we don't believe that there are going to be any detrimental impacts on the patients with respect to their. Incurring any additional costs. Only twenty-five percent of the Greenwich Hospital patients currently that Greenwich Hospital sees are self-pay. And honestly, many of them have no financial need. Uh, actually, they are, they're financially very comfortable. But for those that are financially challenged. Uh, what you heard today was that family centers, which is notorious for making sure that. Payment is not a barrier to access healthcare. that payment is not a barrier to access healthcare, has very, um, generous financial assistance policies different than, uh, Greenwich Hospital, uh, but equally good. And you also heard Mr. Arnold say that in order to make sure that cost is not a barrier to healthcare, they have the flexibility to adapt and to adjust to meet the patient's financial needs based on the facts and circumstances that present themselves. You also heard Mr. Arnold say that they will, for this patient population that transitions to family centers, they will honor the same financial arrangements that they had when they frequented Greenwich Hospital outpatient clinics. So we think, we believe, and we say this quite confidently, that there is no downside or detrimental impact to patients from a financial standpoint as a result of this potential transition. So, um, we believe that what we're proposing here is a more proactive system of care that is less reactive, as you heard just now, by way of example. Behavioral healthcare services and care coordination are embedded in everybody's care at family centers. This is a proactive approach to keeping people healthy. You also heard and saw and questioned, you know, how does, how do federally qualified health centers reduce overall healthcare costs? We have seen that in New Haven. We also know that there, we cited for you a na- a national study which demonstrated that to be true too. So we, we hope that we have demonstrated that the executives of both Greenwich Hospital and family centers have indeed taken a leadership role in their community by going outside of their institutional walls to collaborate together to address the diverse needs of the community. We believe this is truly transformative, desirable and in line with public policy directives to more fully address the social determinants of health. We firmly believe that family centers will not only improve the health of the patients, but will help keep preventiv- preventable healthcare costs down in both hospitals and the community as a whole. Family Centers provides the community with a patient-centered medical home and this collaboration promises, especially with EPIC in play, a more effective integration of health services. There will be a, there will be seamless referrals between the two providers and coordination of services. Given that they have care coordination and share an electronic medical record, there will be less delays with respect to patients accessing the care that they need. This in turn improves patient satisfaction. By collaborating and working in partnership with family centers, Greenwich Hospital and family centers will both be better positioned to serve vulnerable populations and support the comprehensive delivery of patient-centered medical homes. Thank you, and, uh, we look forward to hearing for you once we've submitted our late files.
All right, thank you very much, Attorney Feldman, um, for your closing statement. I would like to thank everybody, um, in your room and everybody online for attending the hearing today. This hearing is hereby adjourned at twelve seventeen PM. Uh, the record will remain open until closed by OHS. And just for those of you who would still like to make a public comment via email, you can submit those for seven days through concomment@ct.gov. Have, thank you, everybody, and have a good afternoon. Goodbye.
Thank you.